Oh, okay.
This is a continuation of the hearing for the conditional use permit comprehensive plan change go through exception of variance application number twenty one dash zero five two dash CUP, twenty one dash zero five three dash CP, twenty one dash zero five four dash V A R. So our, we closed our public comment at the last meeting and everyone had a chance for written testimony. And most of you, I'm recognizing you, and you had a chance for your written rebuttal, so that is all entered into the record. And we will now continue to the next part of the hearing where the commissioners discuss the project and we will be possibly asking for clarification from the audience or from the. Um, I also want to remind everybody that we are not, the, the planning commission is not making a final decision. We will vote on it and make a recommendation to the board of commissioners. And. Hi. So all your written testimony will be transferred to the next level, the board of commissioners. And I really do want to emphasize that we as a commissioner bound to rule, to base our, our, our ruling based on criteria, our recommendation based on criteria, that we are not allowed to have personal bias or to vote for or against something just because we don't like it or we really like it or this, we must base our decision on criteria. Um, commissioners, do we have something to, um, who would like to start, do we have any, any more comments? Or do we just want to make a ruling? Or?
Questions or concerns?
Yeah. What do they want to say?
Oh, yeah, I've got a lot of questions.
Okay.
Well.
Then you want to start?
Why don't you go ahead and start with what you were starting to say. I'm going to wait until appropriate votes.
Mm-hmm.
Right now?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is a hearing.
So, I don't know how really to start this, but, um, property values is a big deal. It says in there that they're not going to be adversely affected. And I don't see how that can be, there's, I don't, I don't know how you could, can say that because they are going to be. That's the way I feel, and I mean, I'm sure a lot of these people feel the same way. Because I, I mean, I live down on Burge Street and that, that substation that's going to get bigger, you know, it's already big enough. I mean, it's, you can see it from my house, there's a light shines right in my backyard, I mean, then that's just me, I mean, right there in town. So people are going to have to live with it, us people here.
What I read of the interpretation of that would be that where the property is located is in exclusive farm use and so it is not affecting the values of the agriculture properties in terms of it's not interfering with agriculture. It is interfering with non-farm dwellings which had to get a conditional use permit.
Okay, so.
Which we vote on those and, and we allow them, but they are not supposed to interfere with agriculture. We add that condition of approval in every non-farm dwelling, that they're not supposed to interfere. It seems like there is a confusion and a conflict with is farming, you know, solar farms is, is a farming, but it isn't allowed to use in the area. So I'm just saying that that is my interpretation of what they are, of what they're responding to. Is that?
I've also investigated that, I've called down four out of five appraisers that I got to meet with. And I'm still studying those comments, I mean, I got a lesson I didn't know I was going to give. Not my expertise.
So they never released on it?
Oh, no, I got four out of five so far that responded, and I've learned a lot, but I don't think it's appropriate to comment on what they say, I got my notes here right at this point, but they couldn't give us specific on the property because they hadn't been there. But I asked an appraiser, particularly Joe's property on three slides, I was really concerned about that. And we gotta see how that fits the criteria and I gotta do some more thinking, you know, uh, not easy. But anyway, I've got one more appraiser, I got a call into them, he hasn't got back to me.
But we're going to close this meeting and I'll take it to the commissioners.
Today.
Oh, we're taking it today, I thought we're meeting on the sixth.
No, this is our continuation because we're not the deciding body.
Oh, okay, I wrote down the wrong date in my calendar.
So, so why don't you share that with us, I mean, because that's.
Well, I do, but then I don't have it.
Yeah, because probably we don't have it.
It would be more diligent. Well, the general, um. Oh, right here, the general thing was that the three-sided, uh, they told me about, trying to find the words, external adverse influences and, uh, three, four of them stated, while they couldn't have a professional permitting of visiting the property, but yes, it would decrease the property, one stated maybe by ten percent, you know. And I asked if I could quote them on that, and they said, yes, but remember it's not our official opinion because we haven't been to the property, but they said three-sided was, they had little doubt. And they gave examples, like if you had two homes that were identical, one had had major structural repair, how would a buyer look at that? And they said, the probably depreciate the, the lower value would be the one that had structure where the other one already had good structural repair, even though they brought up the code. That kind of example. And then one lady appraiser told me about a farm, a house that she praised, high tension lines nearby, noise. And that house had trouble sailing and had depreciations. So, you know, that was the gist of what I got to, and again, I want to state, they said this is not our professional opinion because we haven't been, but it was particularly to Joe's concern that I was asking those questions.
So Darwin, how does that fit into the criteria?
Property values for non-farm dwellings, it doesn't, I mean, it simply doesn't, and that's the unfortunate thing for those that are hearing me in the room. It's not part of the criteria. The value, the criteria of O D F N W or, uh, uh, some five of the six sixty rule talks about effect to cost in agriculture going up. Is there an increased cost to agriculture going up because of a non-farm use? And that's, that's all non-farm uses, that same criteria applies to, um, non-farm dwellings as, as it were to campgrounds, as it were to any other non-farm condition allowed use at which this is. And so, you know, the Alkins have submitted, you know, evidence and rebuttal to that, which is not a rebuttal, um, attachments Z and Y, particularly in, in the table as well as the, the five pages later. So, everybody, you know, in doing that, you know, research on the others, I guess it's fine, but, but how does it apply to the actual criteria? You know, it doesn't, I mean, just flat out doesn't, so.
That's why I was reading it, you know, and I read it the same as you do, it's agricultural values. And I also read that adjoining property values, which is agriculture, but when you're joining it on three solars, what does that mean? So I asked, I went to Commissioner Williams and said, I don't know what the motion will be before, before us, but could we put criteria such as they look at it, would they get legal counsel on it under that matter? Because I'm not legal, I don't know, you know? So he said, yes, you could put recommendations that we look at certain things and you might have legal counsel.
And then, you know, and I, I appreciate the testimony, you know, I've done it like a live on verge, you know, but you guys definitely get that. You know, but has the, you know, an example would be with, i- if you could say, well, all of our property values went down, we, we could, we should have got this and we had to keep dropping our prices because all the sales were happening. We, we thought we were going to be able to get this and then all of a sudden, you know, people saw, you know, oh, you got substation next year, you got all that solar next year, we're not going to pay that.
But we can.
That would be a study that, you know, maybe someone can say, hey, that this is proof that this is devalued property, but there's nothing in the record that we've seen so far that can actually prove it. But again, that's not criteria, you know, for the, you know, for houses on verge, you know, the houses on, on level road.
And I will state that they said the one-sided, you know, if you just see it, that's probably not an accurate. But the three-sided, they were, it was sympathetic, if you just merge and have it, that's probably with that.
But we can add conditions of approval that would address things like lighting and.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
We can discuss what the actual set or back.
And we add on other solar projects as well, we've said, you know, any lighting needs to be shielded, you know, downward.
Yes, I have a question on, on some lights out there. The other things about what we do, maybe some of the time when we're doing a conditional use permit on, on agricultural land, it's agricultural land that's not really suitable to be farm bond. It's very marginal land to start with, so, you know, it's like it's in a gray area to start right off the bat. This is farm land, I mean, what are you going to farm on it? Whoa, are you going to, are you going to farm alfalfa, are you going to farm grass, are you going to farm radishes? Somebody's farming radishes for Christmas, Halloween. And, or are you going to try to raise cattle on it if you can? Is it what, only going to support two-headed cattle, is that really farming? So, I mean, my, my head is going in two directions. This is not, you know, this is agricultural, it's marginal agricultural. But at the same time, then, we've given all these conditional use permits to this and then it's but, and then it comes out to the yeah but. But you're still agricultural, you're not residential because you're all conditional use permits and I just feel like it's, it's clashes, the two ideas, I know what the law is, but I think that the law and the, the letter of the law and the intent of the law are not necessarily working very well together in these kinds of issues. That's my opinion. On the lighting issue, my opinion is, you worried about people sneaking around, put your infrared cameras up and turn your lights out. If people know that they're on an infrared camera being filmed, they don't, you know, they're, they don't even know what cameras are, they can't even shoot them out. They are being filmed, they are being filmed in the dark and you're, you know, and Lakeview is, is promoting itself as a dark sky area. Let's figure out some ways to improve the dark skared sky instead of, just because it's hooded is not going to do as much as those infras. Another of my thoughts, because I feel like, one of the things I love about out here is the dark sky. I like to walk out my door and work out and see the Milky Way. Clearly see when there's no smoke. You know, and I, and I think, I think those are important things to anybody that's going to be near any kind of a, a larger scale development. Those are things that do affect quality of life, even though it's not letter of the law, and there are things that can be mitigated. And, and, and ways to, to make it more compatible with the people that, that do have to share the land with it. That's where I, that's where I've gotten on this whole process, thank you.
I want to clarify something that I think the audience would agree that nobody considers it marginal farmland ground. I mean, it's sagebrush, I mean, you're grazing on it, but it's no water rights. So it's going to be marginal.
No. It, it's actually zoned exclusively.
It's, right, no, it's, it's zoned. Yeah, she's not saying it's zoned marginal, it is zoned E F U, but it's, it's, um, it's sagebrush. It doesn't have water rights, but I mean, it's.
It's not by definition marginal, but under state law.
Yes.
Can I make?
Right, I just wanted to say.
Now, I said, and that's where I feel like the Alkins biting heads, is that it shouldn't be marginal.
It's a state of order. Correct. It's, it's, rephrase that, darn it.
It's not high value farmland.
Not, not high value.
Can I make a comment before we go on? I'm not sure that you guys got all my comments up there. Was that forwarded to you folks?
Yeah, everybody got all their comments.
Yes, so.
Any of those already emailed to me, it's, everybody got.
Yeah, so we have all of your comments, we have their rebuttal, but, um, we're going to send it all onto the, the board of commissioners.
So, Chair. I'd like to also say that after the last meeting, I asked the Commissioner Williams if he would get ahold of Jim Bailey, the county attorney, so I could clarify if I had a conflict of interest. And Bailey clarified, I do not.
Thank you.
And so my understanding also is that tonight we can add some conditions if we think that some of those conditions would be helpful.
Part of what's in front of you that came in late were those conditions, and I will say that stuff that's based off prior conditional uses for solar that we've approved in the past with the addition of the recommendations that O D F N W, John Mear gave in his correspondence. So those have been added to it as well. And of, of course, you know, since date changes and stuff like that, but those are the standard conditions that we've used in the past.
I remember all that.
Um, you know, we're experiencing minor changes for the, you know, fourteen different solar.
Yes, you have a question.
Lighting changes.
It's only, to, to keep this, yeah, so, so as Alison started off, we, we closed the public hearing in that, you know.
We're not introducing new.
In there, we, yeah, we're not trying to introduce anything else. So if you do have a question for the Alkin or anyone in the room reporting to their correspondence for clarification purposes, that limited, thing would be good, but to keep this moving, it's probably important that we don't introduce new stuff because then either side would say, well, you know, if you're going to base a decision on that new information, then you're going to need more time there.
Okay, so.
But for clarification, you could ask.
Yes, all right, Alison.
And most of.
Okay, here's my question, okay, Oregon scenic byway management objectives, okay? Um, I, I printed this out because I skimmed, I skipped a review, okay? Otherwise, I'd simply read. And the first objective, okay, um, is to preserve the rural atmosphere, okay? Um, can you explain that one to me, somebody, Alison?
Uh. So, Darwin, this draft, do you have the? Because this is a draft. Is there, okay, I'm feeling like we need to look in the rebuttal.
Good, because this is what I'm, I'm getting.
Do you?
This is what I'm getting at, is to preserve the rural atmosphere, okay, by putting these solar panels in, okay, that's not preserved. Okay.
Yeah, I would like to make a counterpoint, though, that possibly preserving the rural atmosphere also means not allowing so many non-farm dwellings to interfere with agriculture too, I mean, that's a counterpoint.
Oh, good, certainly.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's the same argument, just a different side.
And, okay, we actually have a solar, much closer, our solar farm, that's closer to the same county or just two of them, actually, I think. And even stock charge probably closer to the ground, so.
I mean, if, I would want to have the solar next to the road and not next to the homes.
It wasn't, did anybody bring it up before?
It wasn't brought up in those other projects either, they were approved technically three projects.
And did anybody bring in the regular solar driveway?
So it wasn't brought up, but it, but it has been, you know, brought up by the officer and it's been addressed in the rebuttal, so.
Yeah, I'm a.
If you want to do this over a lot of this and, you know, go further, but, um, you know, Oregon, you know, Oregon Department of Transportation was profiled, they, they realized what it's possible to do, they didn't have any comment on it itself, um, I'm not sure if the commissioner runs the Grand Orange, Oregon Sync byway and has authority over it, um, but this is setback, it's close to two thousand feet or so from, you know, vast because of the, the area that's close to the highway can be mitigation. How's that mitigation? So, follow through on.
Right, and I think there is somebody that's in charge.
Okay.
Yeah, here. Can I have, um, the team? On the subject of the, the most, it's lettered, it's.
So, but that, that fence is supposed to be what, three, a third of a mile off the road? And, and what's going to be, the building that, because I don't have, I only have a map of elevation to show the elevation. Um, and I, I don't, Christmas, I don't know, so I'm going to have to figure it out. So if, let's say this is the, the solar array and this is the highway. Is there elevate, is the highway above that elevation, is this above the elevation, do you know?
Uh, the, the project site where the panel was located is the higher elevation of the highway.
It's higher than this one.
But.
I roll one for right. No, I, no, you, you can see it easily, very easily.
So. So, you won't be able to see the fencing even on the highway if this is vertical, because you're higher than it.
You wouldn't be able to, yeah, you wouldn't be able to see the whole front of the highway.
And the fencing is a requirement. Yeah. With no raised wire.
Well, it's pretty standard with, like, so, the one post, one wire on top. Not raised wire, but one.
There, there's one, I know there's a solar on right when you drive into Sandy, oh, good, with nice new homes right next.
So Joe, does that answer your scenic byway question, or do we have more questions on scenic byway? Joe, does that cover?
No, I don't think there's a, you know, further. There wasn't any question. China work force criteria here. More criteria.
Don't you have anything additional? No.
Well, I'll say something so that the rest of the committee knows. I have some concerns that from the first outline criteria for planning, you know, such as no agriculture, push hard for that, irrigated agricultural land. I think we overlooked some stuff, I talked to Commissioner, hope to new committee, but it can't apply to this project because we haven't adopted it. I do think we need to look hard at some.
Their classification, their soil classification.
Yeah, look at soil classification, if there's no moratorium, like, no moratorium, if there's no moratorium on water, but it is good agricultural land, it's not the case in this one, but, but why would we look into soil types and, and validity? We could do it, or if it's good grazing land, and grow, you know, grows good grasses, shouldn't we be looking at stuff like that? But like, you can't apply it to this project. I just think that in the future, we need to be, we haven't thought of everything from the first look to criteria.
Okay, but isn't.
It's a loophole, is all it is, it's a loophole.
But. Darwin, is that something that is a legal or is a acceptable criteria to disagree with? Is the soil classification in our big binder?
It's, it's more than just soil classifications, you know, it's what the ranch can be used for, um, it's, and the criteria is, um.
To the criteria is same.
Is what it is, we can't change it, I mean, what it is, um, you know, even that solar community that we've set up, I mean, when we ever get to an actual rule that we can adopt, you know, it's yet to be determined. Um, you know, we, we use two examples, um, climate hasn't yet been adopted either. When they have, you know, setback of like six hundred feet from ours, um, from residential, um. So we're, we're beyond that in all but two cases that we've, and so no, that's, that's, you know, we, we can't move those goalposts now that we're started.
No, that's what I was trying to say, we can't.
You know, I know, I know, you know, there's a lot of frustration probably with me that I haven't pushed that committee towards a, you know, a draft that we can adopt. But as the committee makeup is, it's, you know, it's the planning commission, it's both sides have the eye on this issue, whether it's for solar or against solar, or just against it in certain areas. We could all definitely agree that we didn't want irrigated land and so, um, but this, this application, you know, knowing that the history behind it, those, this, this developer, I should say, not this application, because this application is certainly just for this, this type of soil.
So beyond that, that's not an acceptable criteria to?
Yeah, not right now, what, what we have is, is, you know, going, going back to the stuff for, we have the, the criteria that O A R, O R S is, and the, you know, reason for a vote exception, our normal conditional use criteria, which has been addressed in, in the proposed findings. And that's what, that's what we need to look at.
So Darwin, um, we've been up against this before. And it's usually when there's a lot of opposition, right? So, but nothing ever happens, nothing ever changes until we get to these big, I mean, if there, if there's not a lot of opposition, they tend to be approved and we go on. But, and we've asked from Justin upon board, we asked for this to be, to change that specific to Lake County, you know, to where, you know, it fits better, because that is a valuable piece of ground out there and it's, you know. So, I mean, this isn't new, this has been, I mean, we've been up against this a lot.
Well, I, yeah, this is.
And so can we ask for, uh, continuance until, until they do change it?
No, the, the, to change the solar rule is going to take a six-month process just for the hearing department. And that's if it's even going to get approved. We, we, we've started the process in which we will, we will have a recommendation at some point.
Okay, when you say we.
The, the planning commission will have, uh, the recommendation to the board of commissioners to change the solar, you know, to add additional solar rule or not, and, you know, criteria to our ordinance. But, you know, from where we're at, you know, and, and the discussions that we had, I'm not, I know you run the phone at least a couple of those meetings. You know, but we've discussed what we have on, uh, state law already, which again gets changed pretty quickly. The rules and regulations are constantly redrafting the rule, um, you know, changing, you know, the goalpost, so to speak. It's increasing the, the allowance or decreasing it in certain areas, that's what's happening. But we, you know, that, that process for us to, to accomplish is, is, you know, it's similar to what we're doing right now. There's going to be hearings, which is evidentiary hearing, which we will then present a rule, um, and then it will give a recommendation to the board of commissioners for about, there will be at least two hearings at that level. And then there will be, you know, a close to the hearing and then, you know, a chance for them to deliberate more about the rule, make it, you know, edit or tweak to it and then send it to the state and then the state has to accept them, whether or not. And if they don't accept it, then they would kick it back to us.
So I've got.
And that's, that's a long process, I mean, it's.
But, I mean, we, we've had this conversation for some time.
Yeah, we've had it, and, and a lot of that frustration is, is that everyone might say, hey, let's pick and choose where we're going to put this right away, I know Justin's feeling that way, he said at Fort Rock meeting that, you know, let's just say, hey, we're okay with it here, here, and here. And it's like, that's, it's not that easy, you know, I mean, especially when people have been in a process like these, or other solar developers have even longer than this project, you know, they've worked out these agreements with owners years ago and, you know, we'll see an application, we're going to see an application next month again for new sun on stuff that they've been working on for years. And, you know, it's, what we have to go on is still, I mean, I, I know the frustration, I get it. Um, I ask for not to be involved in that, you know, actually, chairing that kind of, you know, committee, so to speak, because, you know, it's, it's a contentious issue, I mean, again, you know, putting new rules out there, um, is not, not as easy as it sounds. And then it goes back to, you know, property rights, you know? We talked about, like, Kingsdale, you know, and Big Time Ranch, one of the biggest in the North Lake area. They decided to put on what used to be high-valued farmland was producing, they yielding crop, but then thought, well, I'm going to move the water to somewhere else and then, you know, ended up asking for a solar, being approved for a solar on that one sixty.
It was yielding.
Marginal, yeah, a lot of, a lot of market right where they use it.
It was a marginal. Yeah.
Okay.
I like that, we all like that word.
Yeah, yeah, so.
And this is in terms of property?
Yeah, it's just more of a work where it's issues to live on our property.
Okay.
And anyways, I mean, we're having an issue with our property too, so, yeah. Joe, what was your question?
So, my question is, okay, with all of those mitigation stuff that these guys are doing, okay? Yeah, with O D F N W, okay? Why, certainly, there's been a lot of money on, um, this stuff, you know, they're going through the motions, uh, doing that stuff. We, we have to do it too with some projects that we do on the ranch, okay? What about, can we put, uh, some stipulations on these guys that they have to talk to, however many neighbors are joining the ground? some stipulations on these guys that they have to talk to, however many neighbors are joining the ground, because that's mitigating too. You know, you wanna put it in there, mitigate with the people, the property owners there, maybe fifty thousand dollars per each, um, property owner, or I, that's just a figure that, you know, twenty thousand, whatever it is, okay?
So, kind of reps.
But I'm just saying.
Yeah.
That, that, that's, you know, because our hands are tied, you know, with this criteria. And I think it, I think it's wrong altogether, you know. And, I mean, I I just have a.
Well, they keep friends and neighbors unhappy as in our goal, we give them a worse.
Well, there's another thing that, and on the planning commission, okay, so I ran a little bit on that, there is, um, you have to make decisions based on, okay, what's good for the community, okay, uh, as a whole, okay? And you can certainly make your decision based on that, and certainly doesn't have to be exactly on criteria either, you know, because you gotta take everything
But they.
the way that I understood it.
Right, but they will appeal and we would get over those.
Unless they're, not necessarily, it's just it it has to be based on not just feeling, but evidence, and so, like, the opposition right now,
That would.
Unless, yeah.
Right.
Right.
You know, I confused that word, but I mean, the letters that you receive that are, you know, stating the concerns and and true opposition,
Counter opposition, yeah.
you know, says that these are some reasons, and if you can agree with those reasons, and and the rebuttal doesn't cover it, then then you go with that finding that, no, we don't think it needs it because of this, this, and this. But, you know, that that's what's tough about all land use decisions, and and usually, I mean, we're going through Obsidian Solar's, you know, contested case to to Luba right now, and I'm gonna testify on that tomorrow, and it's, you know, when when new evidence gets brought in, or the evidence that that, um, you know, it's just, you know, opinions, I mean, one of the major things that got hung us up before was, you know, a statement about refugee rodents, and they were gonna leaving, you know, a neighboring property and ended up on another hay hay field and in those hay, you know, stacks and everything, and it's like, well, you know, we didn't address it, and so if we're gonna, if we're gonna make a decision, we have to address everything, and so does the applicant, they have to rebut everything that's in in, uh, you know, as commented on, or, you know, legal will say, well, you didn't address it, you know, and so, you know, if, however you feel, I I agree with you, I mean, these people would be very good, but that's why we have a comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan sets it out as to, hey, these are goals for the county, then we have those unknowns to implement those goals. And, you know, the unknown is then, you know, it's in way trumped by, uh, you know, state law, and state law has to be followed, and so on solar, you know, there's a solar rule that we have to follow, and it's goal exception, and it's, and it has to follow.
These guys have done an excellent job, I mean, all this, they've addressed everything, uh, but there are some things in here that I, and I just briefly read all all this stuff. The money, you know, I I feel that the school should get a lot of money, okay? Uh, we're not logging like we used to, okay, it's been years years ago, these guys wanna come in and, um, do so, do a project like this, I think they need to pay for it, you know, not for these damn animals that we're mitigating all this shit for, but for the kids.
Joe.
But I'm just, it's for the kids, that's what I believe.
Yeah, so my, I think though that it's the board of commissioners that negotiates all the SIP agreements and all of that for the school.
So.
Yeah, that's absolutely right.
Now, do they also include a little bit of appeasing the neighbors in terms of like, I know Obsidian, it seems a sub record that, um, like, providing, like, I'll plant trees, I'll obscure your view, you know. Is that something that the commissioners would address?
Yeah, agreed to, they could agree to it now, and as part of the recognition report, they could agree to it as a board commissioners' level.
Like in discussion with?
And they, and they they have to be reasonable, right, so any condition report we we put on there has to be reasonable, and that's why, you know, I go back to that. You know, any setback, you know, that you put in your, you know, criteria, you know, has to be, you know, reasonable, um. And what's reasonable, one may not be reasonable of other, that's what, it's hard to get to, you know, treating every case exactly the same, because they're not.
Sure is not.
This is, well, this is fully different, so the condition of approval, or on mostly uncontested cases, most are uncontested, and a couple have been pretty heated, um, death threats and everything else, um, but in this case, you know, it may require greater, you know, uh, conditions that that hopefully, you know, would you know, make it easier, a little more reasonable, um, and, you know, livable, but.
Or palatable, like palatable.
Exactly what Joe was talking about, some previous projects have come to the commissioners and final approval with those things as community partners, as I call them, as I, if I remember right.
They were called community partners?
Well, that's what they called themselves, and they said, we're gonna do this, and agreed with the commissioners, they're gonna do X, you know. Could be dollars to the school, it could be, you know, building the four inch farm out of Black Gap, or doing criteria into school for math projects, did that one, you know. Those type of things have been agreed to with their coaster before final approval.
Well, Jim, so so this is what I think, I I think.
Or in some cases after final approval.
Well, that's true.
Yeah, the previous one thing came away after the Black Gap's true. Um, you know, the the SIP agreement that was worked out with North Lake on on Obsidian, they were kind of off on, in the weeds, but it it kind of goes back to what we're discussing on what would be reasonable conditions.
It could happen that way.
For an EPC process was discussed and agreed upon way before they even started their EPC process, or at least right at the very beginning, uh, because they knew that the school, you know, taxation, it would go all to the state, and then the state would go back, like they want allocate to it. And it isn't a straight tax, the way, you know, the the number that you've got, you know, goes to the state, and then the state kicks us back money. So one hundred and ten is what's the projected, one hundred and ten thousand, sorry, was projected for this project if it's built out at fifty megawatts, at seventy, seven thousand um, per megawatt, uh, which is, which is pretty standard what we've used so far, even though there's potential change to that.
So you lost.
As long as we agreed to that.
So you lost me on that.
So, so the state, like you said, you're just going over a graph, change to the seven thousand per megawatt pilot agreements, trying to make it, one company proposed like thirty five hundred, I believe it was, and one, they're trying to go more than that, so it's fifty five hundred, um, that I think makes sense, right, but, not that we need to have to clarify that, but what this, you know, applicant has shown, and and advertising that they're willing at least to do the seven thousand per megawatt for the for twenty years, and then it'll be taxed at at the full rate of value of a depreciated valued valued project after twenty years.
Yeah, right there.
So.
Which, but it's still being anticipated as as being more than the normal seven thousand per megawatt.
So, but we can make a recommendation, not necessarily
Yeah, you can give you a recommendation, mm-hmm.
condition of approval, but to make a recommendation that there is a community partnership with the landowners for appeasing.
Yeah.
I mean, it doesn't solve everything, I understand, but, um.
And that can get worked out with board commissioners as well, it can be just part of your recommendation, there's something ought to be worked out as as, you know,
Because this isn't something that we usually do.
More solid and concrete conditions of approval that say, hey, as a community partner, you're gonna do X, Y, and Z, and that should be reasonable, and if it's agreed to, then it's fine, they may not agree to it, and that's the hard part, but as your recommendation, um, but at least it should be a discussion, yeah, I agree with that. Because the North Lake agreement was pretty awesome for the schools itself.
And what was the, what was the agreement with the road department?
So do we have a road plan, is, was that already?
Yeah. Road usage agreement, well, needs to be, uh, developed and and agreed upon, I know that's in the works, um,
In here already?
Blue Mountain, and, you know, EDPR has been working on that, um, with.
Do we have it in our condition of approval?
The road master, uh, for a while, um, the correspondence we got from Ken Hocker, roads superintendent did say, um, that that, you know, he recommends that the road usage agreement is in place.
Right.
Um, I know I've seen the map of the, you know, route that it would take.
So we would need to add it to this, that we would.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, commissioners certainly, yeah, they have to do that and handle that.
I think.
Uh, but it is something that it will be due, this will be the first time we've used a road usage agreement for a solar project, um, you know, if if obviously if it's approved, and, um, for the, uh, and that's a step in the right direction. What happened on one of Newson projects for Calming Lane is after the fact, not having a road usage agreement, Newson came in and did agree to, um, you know, help the road department out on, you know, fixing that road, and the damages that were done. Um, I can't say for certain how, um, like Airport Road, the end of it, which is actually, I believe, um, but, you know, closer to, uh, the south part of Stock Drive, as you go towards the backside of the, um, there there was a portion of this stretch of road that was pretty banged up on construction as well. I believe Obsidian did fix that, but, again, road road usage agreement and and what's been discussed will will come to that. It should be, and I believe it's part of the condition approval, I dropped it already, so.
I wasn't aware of it till recently, but none of these taxes go to the road department.
Or was it?
Well.
So they gotta have an agreement.
Yeah, so the agreement would probably.
It's good to have a motion agreement.
So Jim, that's why I think the road department, okay, everything here in this county, these guys, somehow, we gotta keep the money here. And obviously, they're one hired guy to take care of this thing, a year or whatever, whatever it's gonna be, um. What's it gonna be?
Mm-hmm.
They have construction? Yeah, no, no for construction.
No, close.
After construction.
The, the employee will have it.
Remember employees.
After it's.
Oh, two, two.
Two, okay, two, I mean, that, I mean, that's a point.
And as you've seen, you know, from the Black Gap, to, you know, now the airport's been, you know, welcome for commuters. You know, Abax Solar has been in operation the longest, I believe, of North Lake. Yeah, they, you know, occasionally wash in the panels only a couple times a year, you know, high bills, you know, fixing inverters, things like that, it's not.
Yeah, so so what I was getting at is, this money needs to stay here, okay, so whatever, uh, recommendations, you know, the commissioners, uh, need to do, they they get, they wanna build right here, build in our backyard, this is what it's gonna be. And the money stays here, not go go to the state, stays here, totally.
One of the things I mentioned at the last meeting, this this discussion, of being a good community partner, was they as a developer, those are commissioners, you can make a recommendation. Uh, LCRI that formerly had re-rent land that's for a community solar park for the schools and the hospital, but the state hasn't ever got the rules down. If they could purchase panels at their cost, that would save a tremendous amount of money and provide that service. You know, and it wouldn't be a lot, because it's only gonna be a two mega lot system, okay? You know, so there's a lot of things to be a good community partner that we could discuss and get in a recommendation. If 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 it goes that way, I don't know the motion, so I'm not trying to influence motion, but trying to keep the money and keep the benefits here.
No.
I agree totally.
Yeah, um, and that, we can make a recommendation to do that, you know, with a motion, um, but it's the board of commissioners that has to say, and, um, we, that's, basically, we are we add a little bit, we can make some suggestions, but, you know, we can't tell them fifty thousand dollars of whatever.
Well, we can make our recommendation, yeah, we, we put a figure on it.
That's not really.
Like I couldn't, because it's a recommendation.
I don't see why you couldn't, but it, I'm not sure that that recommendation would.
Well, the commissioner.
Right, I know, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
You know, the commissioners didn't agree with it, they could throw it out, right?
Exactly, yeah. That's absolutely right, and we talked about this last meeting, that you guys might have a split recommendation, and either way, you guys aren't the decision body, if it's split, it doesn't mean that now the project fails or anything like that, but if it's unanimous here, it doesn't mean it's gonna get approved up there, I mean, this is just starting the process, getting, you know, public aware, it's public process to keep.
But it seems like we should make it a little bit more broad, so maybe they need to develop a SIP agreement with that is more lucrative to the community, so if we just make it, I'm just, that's my own.
Let them negotiate.
Yeah.
I think let them negotiate, the commissioners, I think.
Well, that's what they do, we don't, so, I, they get paid.
No, yeah, definitely.
But we can recommend, but we can recommend that they look at some of these issues.
So, you know, there.
So it can be just, uh, with an emphasis on encouraging community partnership and super grievance to benefit the whole of the community.
I would like, um, if, when we get to a motion, that it also include a look at, uh, uh, property loss of a jaining property from the solar, not ag adjacent, but when it's surrounded, in Joe's case, surrounded, what's that property loss, and get a, a, a ruling from the county, uh, board, you know, on that interpretation, because I'm not, you you know, it's always been said ag, but when you say.
I don't. It's a conflict.
I thought there was something in the criteria that had to do with property values, yeah.
But it's only for ag use.
But it's ag, that it's not.
But the interpretation, it's for ag.
Not, not, homes are zoned in agricultural zone, but the actual farm use of, you know, you know, an ag, let me find the criteria specifically, and it's, it's, yeah, it's it's in the six sixty, I believe it's by, uh.
Yeah, I was gonna ask him for that.
That's why I asked for legal opinion, because adjoining property domain, in Joe's case, the solar benefits, not ag, you know.
But it is an allowable use.
What what? It is an allowable use, but it does have property values, so what's the?
And. Right, but it's, but as a non-farm dweller, you've chosen to be out there with sort of adjoining agriculture, and that is an allowable use. It may or may not be more preferable to a feedlot, but it's the same kind of concept.
The 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 issue is, is that a lot of people bought a piece of property twenty years ago, and this wasn't even a part of the thought process, unfortunately, things evolve and they change and they and it doesn't change the rules, it just changes, uh, what's happening technologically. And and then that's just what it is.
Just have a quick question.
No, I was, I was just waiting for the topic.
Are you clarifying?
Uh, yeah, just just good clarification on your guys' process.
Yeah.
Or do you guys have the ability to not make a recommendation at all, like, just yet, not a no, not a yes, just, hey, this is contentious, and knowing that this is just a recommendation, and feel that we don't want, that is that a part of an avenue that you guys could take?
Yeah, no, that was an avenue we could have taken at the last meeting, and that would have been contested.
Really?
Yeah, but that is.
Well, then, this goes directly to the commissioner.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think that's fine, I mean, it'd be nice to, to, the fact is, is that,
Where did you get that argument?
Let me, let me bring it back on this point, okay? You guys have all the record. This decision, if the if the decision stopped today, you'd have to make a decision based on this record. And that's why, things can be as contentious as they wanna be, and and that's fine, that's great, we can deny things every day of the week, we can deny every farm, you know, if we have, you know, base it on, you know, substantial evidence in the record that says, no, this doesn't meet the criteria. And if we find that, then that's the recommendation you should make, so I'm not, not, I don't think it's appropriate necessarily, that you guys just say, oh, we don't wanna be saying if this is, needs it or doesn't need it, you know, the homework, you know, is in place, the the research is here.
But we continue it.
Yeah.
We continue to do something, but we are allowed to have a split decision.
Partly because there was people who felt they didn't get notified, which, um, you know, I went back at the record, you know, their names are on the list, um.
Right. And we do have a test, we've read everything, um.
But RJ sent up fifteen. So, you know, you guys can, again, can make whatever decision you wanna make, but it should be, you know, you're you're appointed to this position to make tough decisions, to also, you know, look in the criteria aside, I mean, and I don't, I I don't envy any of you that gets a position, I don't envy my position, dude, it's supposed to be in the middle of tough situations like this too.
So, I I sometimes get confused, like, if I, I've had this thing about lighting, okay? There's no good for the lighting. Um, whether we, if we did a motion, would we say, we'd like you, as the commissioners, when you're working on this project, to look at some light mitigation? Can we do that?
So, for the lighting part, I mean, you're looking, drop by the other store, probably just have lighting, other than, maybe in the Inverness station, there might be a light, you know, kind of the door's up.
No, they.
Yes.
I know, but it still describes night skies, and there are a lot of options, so.
Well.
Well, let's ask the African.
Yeah.
What lighting will be, it's already in the thing, at the
Um.
At the.
On the facility, there's not on the facility, it's at the substation, and this, further away from what's scheduled now, what we ought to do is
Yeah, so it's early in.
Try to figure out how to get that shaded, because that's, you know, something's going to make it by, um, it's out there.
So. But we, we can make a condition of approval based on the lighting at the substation, what we've done, where it's shielded, it faces down, however.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, shielded, shielded.
Um.
And that would go for all components of the project, this was, you know, you know, that condition of approval would be from, you know, point A to point B, everything in between, and. point A to point B, everything in between, and that's, you know, from your, you know, main location, you would go property down to the substation, everything in between, all lighting is to be, you know, shielded, directed down already.
Yeah, I was.
Darwin? And I hate to harp on this, I read the neighbors agriculture, and I read E D P's interpretation of the law. I have not heard another attorney on another side's interpretation, that's, and laws, that's why some things go through the Supreme Court, I mean, because of the interpretations and way they read. Um, you know, so, you know, that's why I'm saying, in that case, have the commissioners ask their legal advice to get an opinion. If it agrees, it agrees with E D P's, I mean, you know, but I don't know that it would. And I know, I read it too, you know.
We could say deposition.
Oh. Do we have any more discussion, or should we make a motion? If we make a motion, um, are you clarifying? Well, I don't know if it'd be a clarify or it's a question based on the fact that they asked that my comments were excluded. Well, we received your comments.
Okay.
And then they they did rebuttal your comments, and so those are in the record, right, Darwin?
Okay.
Yeah, they're in the record, they were, they did rebuttal, I I did find that kind of ridiculous that they'd ask that.
Yeah.
Very point blank, I think that was stupid, but.
Yeah. Well, that's why I wanted to.
No, and that's fine, I understand the process why, because we did have a a deadline of, you know, five P M, it came at five fifty-six or whatever it was.
Okay, well, if you if you would like.
That's why, because it's a process thing, but you could have resubmitted your comments for the board of commissioners' process and still been blocked, so.
Right, and that is the, if you would like the reasoning, because I was trying to get it in, um,
Yeah.
for the last two weeks, if you've been watching the news, we know what's going on in the world.
Was it, go with.
Since, no, um, Afghanistan, since la- so the last Monday or Monday before, so the Monday right before our last meeting, my husband's phone has been blowing up. He has training and expertise that nobody in this room has, and as a result, there is about a ninety percent chance that my husband is going overseas, so I have had to spend the last two weeks in addition to this, trying to deal with passport issues and everything else. And, you know, I know, these guys wanna make a lot of money, but sometimes American lives are more important, so that kind of took a priority in my head.
Well, I believe your counsel probably commission, just because they requested it, doesn't mean the commissioners have to do it.
My town.
Yeah. Okay.
It sounds more moral. All go with.
Okay, guys.
To the point.
So going back to the, um, Ben had a question about, okay, this is the language O R S, O R six sixty division thirty-three, one thirty, um, sub five says, it's actually, I think it's zero one thirty, it was, sub five says, A and B will not force a significant change in accepted farm and forest practices on surrounding lands devoted to farm use or forest use, and B, which is, will not increase significantly increase the cost of accepted farm or forest practices on surrounding lands devoted to farm or forest use. So, that's the the language, it's a significantly increased the cost of accepted farm or forest practices. So, uh, you know, unfortunately, the language doesn't say anything about, you know, the non-farm use of, you know, in those zones, so.
Darwin, does, does the commissioners get the whole recording of our conversation?
This is just what I was required by that. Oh, absolutely, yeah, the minutes are are almost at the first meeting and they'll get the minutes of this meeting and.
Okay, so they they'll hear everything.
So Darwin, you could argue that it does increase though, right?
And a lot of. Yeah, you could, you'd have to, you know, show how it increased farm ties.
Well, that's another question that I have, um, let's see, where did I?
And it's not just increase, it's significantly increased, which would also pay for a second, that's one of these words that it's.
Go ahead for a second, it's a five.
They word.
Um, subject.
And it's, I'm sure it's been contested in, you know, many areas of counties, it hasn't been contested here yet, but.
You're saying, well, it's really insignificant, you know, it's really two different processes.
What's that?
You know, significant is an important word in that criteria.
It's all how you interpret it though, right?
Well, if I took the word out or the verb in, it's gonna change what I interpret.
And there's a response in the application which I mean, I have read on the, it's kind of a generalist.
You're saying.
Because, I mean, it, I guess you'd have to kind of understand it a little different, but in in some people's cases, you had in, you'd have more than just the feed that you're losing, you'd have the truck even to go somewhere else. You know, maybe the cattle dung boots get there, there's, so you you can dig in pretty deep as far.
But you're talking about the, you're talking about the property owner, but it's just surrounding.
But from surrounded, you know. But this is in surrounding lands.
The feed that's being used up by by putting this in.
But wasn't there?
But.
It's it, hold on a second.
But I think it's supposed to significantly impact.
Significantly change in accepted farm and forest practices on surrounding lands, not these lands, but surrounding lands devoted to farm use.
So it doesn't prohibit.
So.
But back to property values.
Well, those are different, I mean, but it's.
Because it would change the neighbor's property value. Because it has to be on agriculture, so you can't say it's it's messing with my view, it's actually messing, because say that the neighbor rented that for a long time and now he can only have twenty-five instead of a hundred, right?
Yeah, but that's still the property owner's decision, so it's mostly like, does it block somebody from getting to their pasture? Does it impede trucks trucks trucking?
I I see where you're going with that, but it would also have some, it would also make his ranch worth less in the extent that nobody who ever bought it again would be able to have access to that feed, if you wanna dig that deep.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I'm not sure we can.
I mean, if they're gonna go that, so I can't be.
I'm I'm, it's not gonna, but I don't think it's gonna sustain as an argument, but I know what you're saying is that, you're saying that removing that amount of grazing land greatly impacts everybody.
In the.
Yeah, but then you can also then argue with the feds for letting forests burn because that affected apartments and, you know, on and on, that this is.
It's broad, I know, but I mean, though, so the thing is, is pretty broad, so.
I know you're trying, Ben, I know. Yeah. Um, Joe, do you have anything to add?
No.
Ben, are you done?
No, like I gotta find where I was, go ahead.
Are you looking for this?
No. A statement that that was, ah, statement that was ruled by a guy.
Okay.
On on the soil, I'm still stuck on the soil a little bit. I don't think it was there, it's on, it's on some of these corners or, uh, it was in this. One of the county commissioners, uh, started working on.
Good question, so as soon as you guys are done, and and actually technically we've already started working on it, because they got the binders, right, when I got that, that nailed it to you guys, so. Um, well, they're they're, um, but the hearing for them will be at least, at least four weeks out. Because I will send out new notices to everyone, so everyone will get a new notice, anyone that signed the sheets and and sign in will get a notice, especially if you didn't give it before somehow. But that that process then will be about a month out, my projected date right now is actually the first meeting date in Oc- October, uh, which would be, um, October sixth, um, they can hold it on any day, but to keep in line with their normal, uh, meeting schedule would be the sixth. Probably, you know, just to do the afternoon on the sixth, and then just to go however long it takes. But then they would, they would have two hearings, they would hold two hearings, so, and then they would close, um, and so hopefully that first hearing, it would be clear that, you know, we're gonna have two, but that there will be a cutoff date at some point, and we'll have to close the record and make a decision on what what hope and submitted and um, and then they would go from there and, you know, deliberate, someone that even have an hour, you're not, you don't ask for clarification, but not, you know, and then they'll base it on
Is it?
everything, everything that's been submitted so far and everything, it'll be submitted afterwards.
Well, this is a special circumstance too, since it's just a recommendation.
Yeah, it's.
That it's not an appeal process, if you vote against it, you don't appeal it, you just go discuss it.
Yeah, there's no appeal, yes, yes, yeah.
Okay, all right. Would you read that one more time, the property value thing?
Yeah, there's significantly increased, so O R six sixty, uh, division thirty-three, zero one three zero, sub five says, uh, in letter B, will not significantly increase the cost of accepted farm practices on surrounding lands devoted to farm use.
So devoted to farm use is.
So will not significantly increase the cost to do farm practices on the surrounding lands. So if there was an argument to make, it would be say, this is going to increase the cost to do farming because of whatever, you know, I'm fine, it would.
And there hasn't been any objections based on that.
Yeah, and that that's a hard one, I mean, I, that's why I say I don't have any evidence from any other county or none in this county that's saying that, um, I don't remember important appeal that was brought up, but, you know, it'd be hard to prove that, I guess, I mean, I don't. But this is same criteria, again, sub five is the same thing that we use for non-farm dwellings, see, and that's where, you know, really, that that gets brought fairly often, well, you know, but Sims, I think, brought it up for the one that was off the highway down there originally, and then that that non-farm dwelling was denied because, you know, they said it was gonna significantly increase farming, having another non-farm dwelling just to, which create all these non-farm, you know, headaches, you know, you know, straight odds, whatever the case may be, um, you know, trash, whatever the case might be, the right property. But this is still a different thing, it's gonna be events and there's nothing else that happens, um. Review and mitigation for wildlife is handled through the mitigation.
And this is the first time we've had a mitigation agreement, already done before we've had a.
I, yeah.
I was.
Which hopefully, you know.
Because the progress of the Fort Rock was, they were working on that.
Yeah.
They were close after, they were pretty close.
That one was pretty close, but we've had that, so this is a first for that. Oh, and another thing that I think is notable is that, um, the SHPO reports are confidential, so that's why they're not in any of the reminders. I don't know.
Importantly, SHPO agreement is down somebody on the side while we're.
I think it's worth mentioning in the history of this, the reason this is the first solar project that does have a habitat mitigation area to it is because this is the third iteration of this project, and during the F site process, is when they switched from being just full blown all used for solar to having X amount dedicated to that mitigation, so I think it's just based on other, uh, advice that I think E D P R has been given in the past. I don't think they're that generous.
So I give, I give you.
Oh, no, I'm not saying that, it's better than or worse or whatever, but.
So it gives another reason why the mitigation agreement is accomplished this early, is, you know, the OPK has been working yet on this project, or at least this and those other locations for three years now, and, um, so O F N W wasn't, it wasn't just, oh, here we are, we're ready to try to negotiate an agreement. And also why, you know, they were submitted, um, ahead of time is because, um, the contested case that went to Aluba, um, something per county, and they didn't have a all the ducks in a row and in a complete agreement, so it was kicked back, you know, to to the county on that one, so. And we're we're learning more and more as we're going, you know, this, uh, was was certainly something that OPK took uh, the time to work with O F N W to, to get a agreement ahead of time, so.
Joe, can I ask a question? What is it new, say it's a clarification, please. Clarification, why are you making a recommendation without legal counsel present? I mean, yeah, it's a good question, Darwin.
Um, legal, historically, I have fifteen years, I mean.
We're not legal counsel at one, a year ago.
Yeah. Legal counsel has not been involved in this process, uh, on any land use process, to, because that, I mean, the, it's just not something that they get involved with at this level, because this isn't the final appellate body, the legal counsel works, yes, for the county, but primarily for the board of commissioners. And so legal counsel will get involved, but the next one, he'll be at the other hearing, it's absolutely, yeah.
But don't you think they could clarify a lot of things?
No. I mean, we've got an R F P going out.
Yeah.
He's not, his his expertise is not on land use, so, and that's fine, he's excellent at other things, just not my business. I don't mean to kill him off the bus, it's just, well, I think just quick clarification, land use is a big deal, like, you know, Mr. Holder would stand, I mean, you drop a pivot. I mean, we all know that you drop a pivot anywhere, it's pretty gross, I mean, you're good. I mean, land use goes beyond just what you see, what the owner thinks you're gonna do it, use it for. I mean, that's just a clarification on land.
Yeah. Could there are higher outside legal counsel if you needed to?
I bet the board of commissioners could and they might in this case, they, I think they'll take advice from anywhere they can get it, I mean, this is obviously gonna be the toughest decision, very young
The board, yeah.
in their time, certainly on a, on a, you know, county council like this, county board commissioners, it's, it's a tough decision, I I know it's keeping them up, I mean, um.
They're not the only ones.
Diane, I, yeah, I know, it's, you know. So, and that's why I say, I mean, this process is open and is formal as we can get, in that, you know, you're allowed multiple opportunities to to try to build the case that it doesn't fit, and if you can build it, everybody's gonna file that, it's just that, you know, we gotta, we gotta build this, build that case.
I think we're just talking in circles, and we have to get, we need to get a recommendation to the board, whether it's for again, store split, um. I will make a motion to add to approve to, but to add to the conditions of approval, um, the road use agreement and a recommendation, because we already discussed lighting, a recommendation to the commissioners to significantly pursue SIP agreements to benefit the schools, et cetera, and, um, create a community partnership with, um, these landowners whose views will be affected, are affected.
I, we might, we might rephrase that, they like not a partnership, they need to go.
But I think we want it to be broad enough that the commissioners they're gonna try to negotiate the best deal if they go ahead with it.
Are they? I mean, I mean, I.
Oh, I feel like, um, well, we have not, as a planning commission, ever really
Are they, I mean.
been presented with the grasp of how much money this project, so we very rarely do that, we are we're looking more at the land use criteria.
It's not part of the criteria, so that's gotta be kind of objective, and if it's, if it's thing, or it's something that they don't wanna read, you can just say, that's not part of the criteria, you can't even.
Yeah, and. Well, we don't wanna. We don't wanna limit it.
It's a kind of jacket standard, so.
And we don't wanna make it so crazy that they just cross it out too, because they're the ones that make the decision.
Well, I'd like to second that as it was primarily stated, without any, without any amendments.
So.
Darwin, you didn't say just.
So, yeah, so.
Did anybody else have anything to add?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, like, yeah, we seconded.
Would would this be appropriate, the question, that they consider legal counsel on drug property values interpretation and sending by way criteria? That they just seek legal?
Um, well, they will seek legal counsel already, I don't want to muddy the and this is just me, so I would vote against that, just because I don't want to muddy the non-farm dwellings and the farms and ranches, because I don't want to prohibit farmers and ranchers from doing what they want as a result of non-farm dwellings, property values. And specifically, just like if I put in a feedlot in on my ranch, I don't want my neighbor to complain, is, that's my, that's my, my issue.
Okay. Yeah, and if it's a non-farm dwelling, they technically can't, I mean, they could complain, but they couldn't. Yeah, and if it's a non-farm dwelling, they technically can't, I mean, they could complain, but they couldn't sue, according to the non-farm dwelling criteria.
Yeah, but, okay, and we did have a second, so, as, and it was changed.
Condition. So I normally, and, yeah, and normally you can have discussions, so that's still appropriate, and then you could amend if you want the motion.
Right.
Oh, sure, that's why I asked.
Yeah, so if we wanna.
That's a discussion, too.
So I'm unclear of the comment, but it's.
So if we amend, okay, if we amend the motion to to approve with adding the road use agreement suggesting to the commissioners strongly, can you just use the words I already told you, Darwin?
Yeah, so, road use agreement would have to be agreed upon, lighting we discussed, uh, with shielding down on um, the SIP agreement to benefit the schools, um, and then a community partner, a community partnership, uh, to address that, that's what I was doing here.
That's where we got, um, to address, um, property owners, um.
Not a.
So the lighting is part of the, the lighting.
Easy, easy.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
That they're gonna consider, right?
Yeah.
That's just.
And I, I wish I was the next one on, on substations and why those are lighted the way they are, I don't, I don't think it had to be that way, I, and certainly there's some security issues, but it still seems right.
No, maybe not.
Just the easiest way to light it.
Okay. Um, so, Joe, do you want to add?
I'll back off of what you said, because they will hear our testimony and go through those concerns, they'll hear the record that was done tonight, so, I'll back off, just, so I don't muddy up things that we, I'm not anticipating, you know.
Yeah. Oh. Of all of those.
And the, and the board commissioners certainly can amend and add to all of this, and, and so they likely will, but just on extended.
Okay. Well, we just give the recommendation, really, the road use agreement is the only thing that is a condition of approval, the others are just, you know, we want our communities to be taken care of.
So that's just part of the recommendation to them, that they work on these things, and see if they can work with your opinion too.
Okay.
For a rural environment school, that's where dollars need to be, right, and lots of dollars, not just.
Okay, okay, so, and Terry, second?
Any final discussion, we're probably wanting to take a little call.
What's up?
Joe?
No.
How's it?
Yeah, yes.
Terry?
Yes.
So, motion approved three to two, now, the board commissioners could come back and ask, you know, specifically what were your reasons, um,
Right.
I don't, on recommendations in this case, where normally if it was land use decision, there are no appeals, so, you know,
Just no appeal, so.
I think we've heard certain probably the reasons, and they have to do with, you know, especially stuff that may not make criteria, but if there were criteria, it would be helpful to know what they were for the board commissioners sake, but once it's past this level, this is your chance to speak, I seriously doubt that they would remand it back to you to further review it, they won't, that sort of wouldn't be my recommendation from my part, um.
Yeah.
So we can certainly go to the meetings that they're, they're having.
Yeah, yeah, cause I, and that, and I will ask legal counsel that specifically, normally you wouldn't, because it could get remanded to you, um, I'd say a normal to you.
So. But, but this is a recommendation.
Yeah, so it's, I think you'll be fine too, and they might ask you during that meeting to clarify your positions, which, which seems likely to be okay, legal counsel may tell them, well, I mean, it's not appropriate.
But in a typical C U P.
I mean.
The cost explanation, which should be legal for, for the thing you're giving us by school tool, that's questions.
Right, but in a, but in a typical C U P, like, we're not even supposed to discuss it out the door until it's all done, and then if it comes back to us, so we're not allowed to go to the commissioner meeting.
So do we have to give them reasons, or?
Um.
Should we say reasons or no?
If you want them to consider your reasons, then, then yes, and so it's appropriate, I think, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
Or I have them contact me, then I can certainly let them come in and.
Yeah, and so the, so they, they, I will tell them that, I mean, you were up for that, you have met people glad to, um, you'll allow use time for review, for reviewers.
Yes, okay.
I, I will remind this board, just as I have to remind the board of officials, we, we want to avoid, you know, you think, right, if we're taking contact, which is talk with
Yes. I would.
everybody, um, this is the hearing process, um, that's what's so different about land use and, um, compared to just, you know, normal, you know, making a, uh, an opinion about something, it's you know, um, conflict of interest, uh, bias, those are all things that have to be considered, you know, this decision you know, put back, you know, from what you voted, you write me the approval because of what's in the record, and I, I don't, for the conference, which we're seeing, so.
I, I also, uh, Chair, yeah, I got a question.
Now, uh, last week, we kind of spoke at a, at a turn, okay, and, um, I thought we agreed that you weren't gonna vote.
So.
Uh, that's when I went to, to, uh, the county's legal counsel, I asked, was, I wanted to clarify that, and he said no, but it.
Well, I would, I would argue that, you know, I mean, I would argue that, that, that he said it's fine.
Yeah, he told me I was okay, so that's, I wouldn't, if he told me it wasn't, you wouldn't seem to vote.
What was the question? What, what did you, how did you phrase the question to legal counsel?
That I have a, I'm over there, that I have a conflict of interest.
And which is?
That I know about renewable energy and stuff like that, that.
You know, having knowledge on renewable energy gives you a conflict of interest?
Yeah.
Well, I thought that's what you said.
No, 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 you were, you were offering to give them help, you were saying, hey, come in after the fact, and let's go.
I don't know.
I thought you were trying to like, offer meet with them on a roll and to figure out where you wanted money to go, go down.
Community partner, because what, I could have been, I should have been my director.
Yeah.
When they went around the county process, they were not a community partner, and that upset me terribly, I was trying to say, if you want to be a community partner, I can give you some advice on that. But that's wrong, I just.
I think because of your position.
So, from what Jim stated, his, you know, discussion with my legal counsel, after having, you know, spoken with also a commissioner on the, on the issue, you know, I think that's fine and appropriate. Again, this is a recommendation, it was made, we're not redoing both, the votes three to two, so.
And you're gonna appeal to the county commissioner.
Uh, with, with those that are objecting, the recommendation votes them that you'd be willing to, you know, discuss further, uh, to your position. And that's the recommendation we're into, in writing to the board commissioners, uh, using, using the staff board, using all the, uh, evidence in the record so far, and, uh, with more pressure built here, and, um.
Okay, so also, we do have an opening on the planning commission, so.
Three.
Yeah, um, it's not super fun, but, um, it's, um.
So, before we close, let me just, would there be a comment allowed at the commissioners' meeting?
Uh, yes, at least two hearings, you know, and so, and, and a comment.
Yes. Yeah, this is number.
Yeah, and, and that might be back to back meetings where they, you know, go two weeks later, but there will definitely be two meetings, and the first one will be notified, the second one usually is not notified, someone did this tonight. So, and when you show up to the meeting, you'll hear the time and date, server, when that next meeting will be, um, Chair, there's really nothing else in the record that we could probably go over right now, I think, I already wrote it, so we can close it, the, the, um, planning commission won't be again on the twenty first, um,
Right, and our next meeting is on twenty first.
I, I will talk with the commissioners about the solar community situation, and if we want to keep that going or not, um, and, uh, so, um, I know there's certainly you know, some want to go forward, some don't, so that's where we're stuck going with the deal, so.
Okay, so, let's adjourn.
Yeah, let's adjourn.